See, you can see this, you can see that.
Sergeant. Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazoo.
Present.
And Ms. Wickler.
Present. The adoption of the agenda.
I do not have anything to add or take away, so if there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I make a motion we approve the adoption of the agenda.
I'll second it. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickler?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Russell County Education Association, RCEAs, Certified Employee Recognition, Sarah Williams, uh, Russell County Ed- a Russell County Elementary Teacher.
Sarah's not here.
No, she had, uh, brought her president of RCEA. Ms. Williams had every intention of being there earlier in the email, so I don't know if something may have came up, but I would like to take a minute to honor her. She is, um, this month, September, Certified Employee of the Month. Uh, she works at Russell Springs Elementary School and teaches first grade. Uh, she has been teaching for six years. Uh, she has her bachelor's degree from Lindsay Wilson and her master's in special education from Campbellsville University. When I asked her what she liked best about teaching, she says, "Teaching has always been a dream of mine. I knew from an early age that I wanted to be a teacher. I remember looking up to so many of my teachers and how inspirational, uh, they were to me and others. I hope I can be that for a student. I'm so blessed to be able to wake up every morning and do what I love to do." She enjoys working with the students and seeing the growth every day, and she loves the relationships that she is able to build in her profession. Uh, she spends time with her family and friends and loves, uh, spending time outdoors and gardening on her spare time. And her favorite quote was from Isaiah 41:13.[167.01][167.61]"For I, the Lord thy God, will hold thy right hand; say unto thee, 'Fear not; I will help thee.'" Uh, Sarah's a great, uh, uh, teacher at Russell Springs Elementary School and a kids lover, and, uh, we've got a great monetary gift to give her. Uh, so I'm sorry she couldn't be here. I know that she had, she had planned to be here and filled this out for me, but, uh, we're happy to be back in the season thanks this year.
Glad to see you back up there.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Martin.
Okay, next. This is for information only. Justin.
McAlves. He, he, he doesn't.
You can't say it, bro. Macal fresh.
Macal fresh.
Hey, my lady, the name of Lamberty, nobody could say it.
I know people can't.
Okay, he's with Sherman Bernhard Architects, and we're going to talk about the possibility of renovation of the whole area technology center.
So, a few weeks ago, we walked through the existing area technology center with Mr. Ford, uh, looked at the, the condition of the building, and also looked at it with, uh, the idea of potential scope in mind. What would we, what would we need to do if we came in here, uh, to basically get it cleaned up and suitable for new program? Some of those new programs were cheerleading, JROTC, just a number of, of activities that you could never have enough space for. So, uh, obviously, the building, the building shell is in fairly good sound condition. Uh, but we looked at the following scope for the building. A new roof, it does need a new roof, a roof replacement. Some exterior improvements, which would basically just give the building some type of facelift. Uh, HVAC, lighting, uh, fire suppression is something that we talked about primarily because the building currently has some wood frame construction in it. Anytime we see, uh, wood framing, that throws us in a different construction type for schools. And that can be, we could cure a lot of ills with the fire suppression system. So, a spray push system is probably, uh, something that we would look at or recommend.
And it would be an issue, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, to move forward with plans probably without a fire suppression system?
Correct.
They would kick that back since we're doing a major renovation.
You could, you could get by without it, but you would have to jump through a lot of extra hoops, uh, to get around not having a spray push system. Uh, the other two, uh, scope items were, obviously, there would be some demolition required, and, uh, we know that we'll have to do some minimal improvements just to accommodate the new programs that would go in each space. We didn't really talk about major, uh, changes throughout the facility as far as, you know, the rooms, what is a room today would most likely continue to be a room tomorrow. Uh, we're not really talking about making major, uh, spatial changes throughout the building. It's really just kind of a refresh, make sure we can keep people, the building occupants comfortable, uh, kind of refreshing the finishes and, uh, that type of, of scope, really. Uh, so what I've done tonight for you, and I do have the existing plan, my, uh, some folks from my office have gone through the building and drawn what was, what is there currently, uh, just for reference, if anybody has any question, we can reference that. But what I've done in front of you tonight, you will see basically three options. Uh, I put the, what I've titled on this, best, better, and good. Good, better, and best. I'm going to start with best because it kind of has all the scope and, and basically the maximum, uh, project budget that we would think that it would, it would take. Uh, so if you look at the best one there, obviously, we're going to have some demolition required, and because of the age of the building, we anticipate there being some type of abatement that's required, uh, for hazardous materials. Uh, just with the age of the building, we know that there's, in all likelihood, there's some type of material there that will need to be taken care of. Then if you look down at the renovation scope, uh, we've got an allowance included for some exterior improvements, and those would be things like maybe dressing up the entrance. Uh, there is some exposed CMU along the side that maybe we would look at covering with different materials. At the backside of the building, there are some existing garage doors. We would either, either look at whether or not it makes sense to infill those or replace the doors in some cases, but just general improvements on the outside of the building. Then obviously, one major need for the building would be a re-roof. Uh, there are some leaks that are present over there now, and to be quite honest, the, the roof is just of the age that it, it needs to be considered for replacing. Uh, so we've got that in there at about $16 a square foot. That would take care of both the low sloping or flat portion on the front and then the metal, uh, portion that's over top of the metal building frame, kind of in the high base spaces toward the back. We've also included some general interior improvements, and we've included $100,000 there. That, as I said, that's not a lot of spatial changes in there. It's really just, you know, if we use the administrative offices that are currently there, we might be making some modifications in there. Just some general, general light, uh, scope changes in some of the, uh, spaces to accommodate the new programs. Then the next category that you'll see there are some finishes. Uh, we, throughout the building, and we, we have it at just, just under 22,000 square feet, we would look at basically just refreshing everything, uh, taking out a lot of the flooring that's there, and, uh, we could even look at doing stained concrete or polished concrete throughout, kind of a, a good, uh, long-term solution. Uh, then if you flip that on, there's two sides to each one of these sheets. On the backside there, you will see, uh, lighting, replacement of lighting throughout, uh, HVAC improvements, and that's a big number, uh, for the total scope there. And then the last, uh, kind of line item there is the fire suppression system. So if you look at all of these together, you're looking at a total project budget there for that option of just a little over 2.1 million. So, uh, if you look at the other options that I've given you tonight, basically what I've done is I started with this as being the best, and I said, "Well, if, if that isn't something that's going to work for the district, how can we do less and still achieve the same goal?" Uh, so with the better option there, uh, under the renovation scope, you will see I've kind of put together two categories, two categories or priorities. Priority one is primarily, primarily those items, uh, that really probably should be done, uh, because they affect occupant comfort, or there are things such as the roof that needs to, is of the age that needs to be done, or, uh, there are life safety issues such as the fire suppression system that we talked about. So one of the changes that you'll see under this scope is when we walk through the building, we think there may be some, some, uh, HVAC options that are less sophisticated and just, you know, we could condition the space with as minimal, uh, effort as possible. So we reduced the HVAC, uh, to a, to a lesser system under this. It would still, uh, perform really well, it just wouldn't be, uh, kind of a higher-end HVAC system. And then if you flip it over, we also looked at under this one, reducing some of the finishes, so you'll see, uh, recognizing that some of the spaces are obviously, there's a boiler room, uh, there are, uh, tool rooms, well, some, some storage classrooms, different smaller areas that may not need floor finishes, uh, that aren't really going to be as prominent, uh, prominent spaces. So we reduced the area for flooring and new ceilings or painting out the exposed structure to roughly two-thirds of the building, just kind of recognizing that maybe there are some of those spaces that wouldn't necessarily need, uh, those types of improvements. And then we also, in this one, reduced some of the exterior improvements, uh, basically cut that one in half, I believe, for this one, and, uh, the general interior improvements, we reduced that some as well. So that, again, pulls it down roughly a half a million dollars to around 1.6. And then, uh, the last and final, uh, kind of, uh, summary there, uh, we looked at, uh, it's the same breakdown essentially, with, uh, some slight changes under priority one on the front sheet. You will see, uh, lighting and HVAC. We actually looked at whether or not we could, kind of the same type of, of mentality, recognizing that those smaller spaces may or may not need to be, uh, have the same treatment as the larger spaces, uh, we just backed out some area. Uh, so we reduced that to roughly two-thirds of the, of the building there. And then on the backside, again, the same, uh, the same kind of reductions in, in finishes, and we also, uh, reduced the amount of interior improvement, or exterior improvements, and we, we really, uh, under this, uh, last option, we eliminated that line item we had for interior improvements, basically just saying, you know, if we have space, that's what the space is going to be. We're just going to basically use the space as it is, uh, refresh everything, new lighting, new HVAC, and that type of thing. So I've given you a lot of information here in, uh, in just a few minutes, but are there any questions that you might have? Yes?
What's general conditions?
So, general conditions, assuming that we bid these projects and we, uh, put this out for bid, and we had a general contractor that did all this work, that would be the general, uh, scope that they have, just to oversee the project, things such as, uh, storage, uh, equipment rental, uh, just kind of all the, the line items that don't necessarily fall under specific improvements.
Why would they change on good, better, and best? It'd be to do the same thing?
Because typically, it's just a percentage of the construction cost. Typically, we see it's about 3% for general conditions. So that, that's how that's calculated.
Let's see upgrade, uh, let's see HVAC upgrading is from the best to good.
Yeah, that, and that's really what changed primarily.
Let me just, um, talk about the space just for a second. So Justin mentioned, uh, in general TC, and cheerleading, and we've also talked about dance, but also please keep in mind when we do the middle school and the block buildings that are back behind there, that has the Laker Success Academy, um, then the other one has Gifted and Talented.
Yep.
And, um, all of the office for the special education annex and all that. We need room for all those people, and we won't have it because those buildings need to be gone when we do middle school, you know? So we need to be cognizant of that with, with space. So it is, um, as we walk through with Justin, talk about it, and I told you, uh, Ford, about every entity has planted a flag over there if they couldn't at all. There's a lot of interest.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in the building. I've met with, um, Mrs. Ellis, and I appreciate her time probably at least twice or maybe three times, just thinking about cheerleading in that, uh, mechanic space because they've got height and, and, and space this way, and talked with Danz and, and Commander with the, in general TC. Um, there's a lot of good space to make it work. We know the condition of the building, we knew that, you know, that's, that's why we had to build a new ATC.
I told.
But we're going to need some space somewhere to do something. Justin, have you all worked on any projects, SCB, to where we know one thing of the federal stimulus money is HVAC, is everybody blesses that. There's no questions about HVAC on the federal stimulus dollars. Have you, have you done any jobs where you split out and part of it was funded yet out of, let, let's just say that we got permission, and Ms. Carnes and I have had some conversations with our auditor about use of, of the stimulus dollars, but let's say we got permission to do the HVAC and use the federal stimulus money.
Right.
Feasibility?
Yes, I think that.
Hopefully could.
We have never seen, especially HVAC, be an issue.
Yeah. Because they, uh, one thing they recognize, and that would be a big hunk of this.
Yeah.
And they recognize the fact of air quality.
Yeah.
Exchange and everything like that.
That would be good.
Yeah.
They, there's, they have been giving a lot of latitude and some flexibility when it's related to the things.
Okay, so when we, when we tap federal funds into it, it makes all of it on the federal wage scale.
Right.
How much do you think that would impact the rest of the project?
It's going to impact your labor rates, obviously. I think we would have to meet Davis Bacon wage.
Yeah, I could take this turn.
However, you know, you're, you're talking, you typically, uh, materials are going to make up about 30 to 33% of the project, so, uh, you know, it will increase the wage rates. But to be honest, when we got rid of prevailing wage, I think everyone expected the cost of construction to go down, and we didn't really see that. We saw a dip, a short dip, but construction costs really came right back up. And I don't know, you could, I don't know the exact premium. You would pay a little bit higher wage scale, uh, but it's not going to be, uh, significant on a project of a couple million dollars.
So when we do a project and use federal funds, it makes the whole, everything applicable to that federal wage scale, is what I'm referencing there.
Yep.
So it wouldn't make the labor part.
No cheaper.
Higher.
Higher.
Yeah.
Pay union scale.
But it wouldn't be enough to, it would certainly still be a good hunk of change to be able to use that federal money.
Absolutely.
For that HVAC system.
Especially given, you know, if you look at the percentage of money that's dedicated to the HVAC system, I mean, it's a significant piece of this.
Sure is.
Yeah, 361,000.
On the cheapest one.
On the, on the best one.
HVAC was 870,000.
And even on the, quote, good one, it was 361.
Correct.
I mean, that'd be a big chunk out of the total.
Yep. I can't look at Marla say this, Ms. Carnes doesn't say this. You know, she, you know, uh, we, we can't, this is, we can't use restricted funds, you know, the rest of this, as we talked before, we'd need to make up, sell a general fund bond, do something, um, to make up the difference of whatever we came up with, so. I kept my head down, Marla, while I said that, just like a dog that's in trouble or something.
I'm saying it's high, it's high. Even the, the cheapest is high.
Yeah, it's, it's an old building.
Yeah.
And then the spaces are just, it's not like renovating a typical classroom either, you know?
But it'd be a lot cheaper than rebuilding, wouldn't it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. That's terribly, huh?
Well, you're looking at, yeah, 21,000, almost 22,000 square foot of a building. Now, that's only the, that's not the cinder block building. We're not doing anything with that, uh, with this. This is just the main.
Well, it definitely could be used, even like, like from the buildings that will, that will be destroyed eventually, like that.
We're going to have to have space somewhere.
The speech and, and occupational therapy and.
There's what, six?
Physical therapy?
Six or seven people in that one classroom, and then, like I said, Gifted and Talented, and then the other, there are three offices or classrooms in that one building, then LSA has three classrooms.
Okay. And there would be enough classrooms, wouldn't it?
There is.
To serve.
We, we kind of made a list, and we went through that and talked about that.
Okay.
And, um, in general TC, really, we'd like the opportunity to have the rifle range and the space of that, uh, and then there's supposed to be, like, what is it, armory and different things, a program space for in general TC.
Right.
Versus where they're at currently.
Then that would be open.
That would be open, yes, yeah.
If they had classrooms during the day, and then we can have plans or cheerleading or whatever that practice is, I.
Probably would be enough space, uh, for both, because we would look at using the bays, like the big auto mechanics bay for the, for like, uh, that first one right there. Like where Justin, right there on the top on the left-hand side, that could be like the home of the cheerleaders.
Well, of course, they've had to be at the First Baptist Church forever.
Yeah.
Have to practice there because they never can get to gym.
I mean, it's a couple of those.
And they won't get no wear.
Yeah, they, these were more like classrooms.
Yes.
These are the higher volumes, places some of these have actual mezzanine areas or storage.
There's a good, there was a computer lab, it's a really good additional classroom space. The conference room is a good spot. Health sciences is large, it could easily be two.
Yeah.
So all those rooms, if you're worried, Ms. Wickler, of things about having the classroom space in addition to the other spot, we, we would have it for this, for the rooms that we currently have out of the block building. But realistically, once those block buildings are gone, um, about every spot would be filled here. It really would.
Yeah.
It really would. But still keeps up on campus, Ms. Joy referenced, uh, cheerleading, going to the First Baptist Church. Dance practices usually in the lobby of Russell Springs Elementary School.
Yeah.
And people just kind of works around them, you know? And that's not a problem, that's not a situation unique to Russell County schools, that's.
Right.
That's everywhere, but, I mean, it's, it's great to be able to have a spot for people and not to have to leave campuses and stuff like that. Well, we, we'd ask, um, of course, we talked about a summit, a working meeting, and, and we went through the building with, um, with Justin, and I'd ask you, and I appreciate this work, Justin, I appreciate how you broke it down into kind of three different options there. Like I said, this was just informational for us tonight to, to think about it, and then we can kind of formulate a plan later how we want to proceed. You have anything else? Anybody?
I don't know what else to ask the questions.
As soon as I step away, you'll think of something. If you come up with questions, and if you shoot him, Mr. Ford, we talk regularly.
You want to talk just kind of a little bit about middle school to our, for now? Just mention that.
Yeah, so, uh, we did talk, uh, I actually came down Friday morning and met with the principal of the middle school. Uh, we have talked about possibly getting a group together and just kind of looking at, kind of, maybe going and touring some middle schools just to kind of see what's out there, uh, just to kind of get ideas, start brainstorming about that, uh, and then very shortly starting the process of, of getting into the, the middle school project, so, uh, but we did kind of have those initial discussions on Friday, and we're ready to hit the ground running on that as well.
We want to be kind of ready to roll when the new fiscal year starts for the middle school. Which I know it's middle of, well, it's past middle of September now, but July 1st will be here before we know it.
Yeah.
That's true, late time, I said.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Justin. He, he knows all about this school stuff because his wife teaches.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Yeah.
Where does she teach?
Uh, she's in Jespin.
Jespin County, yeah.
Jespin.
Yeah.
I taught there one year.
Thank you, Justin.
Jespin, Nicholasville Elementary.
Public comment?
Uh-huh. Is on splits.
Anything you want to say?
Michael, I've got a public comment.
Yes, sir.
As you know, we've just done the, uh, alternative school here, I know we're still making payments on that, and we were talking about redoing the middle school or building a new one, and now we're talking about doing this, can we afford to do this without bankrupt center county?
Yeah.
Talking about 25 million on the high school, 2 million here and 12 on that, I mean, that's, you're looking at 40 million dollars real quick.
Yeah, uh, remember at that last meeting that we had with, um, Ross and Clarence Associates, and they dropped, hold that whole funding projection out, they will not give us any more, um, actually, they're usually conservative, uh, for instance, to do the middle school, starting July 1st, we'll be eligible to do that with the new bond sale, and it's considering our additional offers of assistance from the state, they will not let us do anything more than what we can, that we're positioned and afford to do. That last, the legislature, when they did that, our third nickel and equalized part of that third nickel is what the game changer was. It was, the legislature's been really good, if, if a district helps itself and does projects with the, uh, with, passes the nickels, then they contribute with that with the, a few different formulas, but yeah, we'll be positioned to do that, um, on what we currently have without any additional taxes or anything like that, Mr. Murray.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job, Sheriff.
Yes, not now, this coming July is when that's available, and they'll do that other offer of assistance, the state will, yes.
Anyone else? I have no consent agenda items.
On the consent agenda items, we have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, construction funds report, school activity funds report, financial report, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report for August, Ms. Carnes.
All right, the treasurer's report for the month of August 2021, balance on hand beginning of the month was $6,807,527.56. Total receipts for the month were $1,422,845.95. The total of the receipts in the beginning balance together was $8,233,373.51. Disbursements for the month were $1,770,328.12. And that brings the balance at the close of the month to $6,460,045.39. In federal balances, in the general fund fund one, $5,377,904.66. In special projects fund two, $329,456.99. District activity fund 21, $7,279.40. Capital outlay fund 310, $140,952 even. FSPK building fund, fund 320, $0. Construction fund 360, $260,000. Construction fund three-sixty, two hundred, sixty-three thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And debt service fund four hundred, negative eighty-eight thousand, six hundred, fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Food service fund fifty-one, four hundred, twenty-six thousand, three hundred, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the due sharing fund, fund seven thousand, three thousand, one hundred, twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. That brings the total cash bankroll funds to six million, four hundred, sixty thousand, forty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. And if you will remember, this time every year, we start to run negative on debt service. And that's because we have a lot of bond payments due early in the year and then when we get our tax money, which we should get our first, um, payment of tax money in early November since they collect all through the month of October now. We'll come back up to positive on that and, and stay there basically till the end of the year, so. That's nothing to be concerned about, it's just a timing issue.
Like Ms. Carnes said, we see that every year. Thank you, Ms. Carnes. So if there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the agenda items.
I second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper?
Yes.
We're going to work on the budget for SY 2021, 2022.
Yeah, so this is our third, uh, table of the budget, and this is the one that we'll work off of for the, uh, rest of the fiscal year. KRS 160.470 requires local boards of education to adopt a working budget. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year working budget has been presented, it must be adopted and submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education by September thirtieth of each year. These have to balance, Ms. Carnes is good, but it's not that she potentially has to balance everything to the penny. Uh, revenue and expenditures of twenty-five million dollars and, you know, she's got a few high points or highlights she's gonna reference.
It's nothing radical or different than the budget we've had the last few years. Of course, this budget does include the two percent, um, the minimum two percent raise that we gave everyone. You know, or a few categories like our custodians and people I've got that got one of the two percent, kinda get their wages up with something more competitive with other districts in the great areas, you know, build that up a bit. So that's built in, as is the, um, increase in retirement contributions for this year. And otherwise, it's just kinda keeping things current with where we're at. You know, right now, when we have a lot of the ESER stimulus, COVID monies, whatever you wanna call them, there are several things that we're able to kind of divert to that pot of funds that, uh, you know, we don't have to pay for it. You know, like, for example, we purchased school supplies for all the kids at the beginning of the year and instead of taking that from the general fund, we're gonna take that from that class money. So there's some stuff like that. I, I know there are some changes coming effective January one, uh, twenty-twenty-two to teacher retirement and new, new teachers hired after that point. I have seen various limited information about, um, how that's gonna affect our contributions as a district. I did go look up the law and read it and, um, it references an employer contribution. But sometimes that employer contribution means the part the state pays and sometimes it means the part we pay. So it's not clear to me how much additional we may be picking up on, uh, new teachers that start contributing to teacher retirement hired after January one, twenty-twenty-two. But I think that's gonna be something we need to have on the horizon to, uh, see how that works out because it, I think it could be significant for us if a lot of that percentage comes back to the district payment. Because my understanding is that new tier of the retirement system, there's gonna be a, kind of a financial piece and a variable piece and the contribution rates are something like eight percent, two percent. So if we're paying a significant piece of that, if we pay all of that, or we even pay half of that, that's gonna be considerably more than we pay out of our district now for retirement. So that's something I wanna make you aware of. And it could impact this budget a bit if we have some retirements or we have some of them leave the district mid-year and we hire someone, replace them, you know, we're not really taking that into account, so it could be a little, a little impact.
Kind of what they're referring to, the new hybrid.
New hybrid.
Hybrid system for the teachers.
New people, so that is one thing we'll have to keep an eye on and see what happens with that. And certainly will be something to impact our FY twenty-three budget, which, that sounds kinda crazy to say, but that will be here before we know it.
That's true.
We'll be, of course, looking at a draft of that in December or January. Um, but otherwise, we've got money built in, first is probably a couple, uh, two to three buses like we've been doing each year. You know, paying cash for those to kinda keep our fleet up and current and, um, it just, it's very much a good, solid budget. Uh, our contingency, of course, has increased a bit and is a year very well this past year. Naturally, when we gain the raise, that'll eat into our balance a little bit for this year. Uh, we may not end on five until the end of this year, but we're in a very good place right now. Have a good, solid budget and have enough of a cushion to not need to pay anybody if they might get changes in retirement rate, but
Or first, I was only okay.
Shouldn't we get something coming down the pipe that is a, is a significant difference? We've got enough of a balance to help us get through that till we get, you know, get it figured out how we're gonna manage and what we're gonna do with all that. So we are as healthy right now as a district as we have been in the fifteen years that I have been here, so.
Amen.
Yeah.
You know, we're
She keeps using that word significant, though.
Well, she, she doesn't want you to have surprises later down the road, but it is, it is a very, uh, healthy budget and we are positioned, just as like Ms. Carnes said, as well as we've been in a number of years. And it's what's so important about it is to be able to weather unknowns, right? So, so that we have that, we're able to do that. I want to again, um, thank the legislature and Centralide and Representative Branscombe for the, um, funding of full-day kindergarten. Probably thank them again for that, that is, um, that's a blessing for our school district and we hope that we see that again when they gavel back into session, uh, the regular session in January. That was very significant to us and certainly contributed to the decision to give employees a raise and that we're wanting to do that again, you know, fiscal year twenty-three. And also, um, uh, really, really appreciate the legislature and Centralide and Representative Branscombe for us to be able to choose fiscal year or school year eighteen, nineteen, um, for attendance calculations on ADA and things like that before the pandemic started, they put that back into effect. That will be us doing that now for three. Yeah, three years of using the same.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
It's the now that we have that to count on, that we're not gonna see a giant fluctuation in our seat dollars. I mean, that's
Because we know if that is, we know what eighteen, nineteen year was. And then for them to realize and appreciate the variability that school districts have experienced since the pandemic began, uh, we very much appreciate that and that's significant for our school district. So I recommend approval of the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two budget. And as Ms. Carnes said, we'll have a, a draft again starting in January or December. Uh, with the, this certainly has the required state contingencies of revenue and expenditures of twenty-five million dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve the school year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two working budget that's required state contingencies. I need to say the twenty-five million, twenty-five million.
I'm, I'll second it.
Is that Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper?
Yes.
Oh, no, better.
This is the addendum that you all see each year, Cumberland Family Medical, after the salaries and everything of the school nurses are finalized, Cumberland Family Medical shall pay one hundred percent of the total cost of salaries plus fringes for the school nurses as detailed in, in the addendum one. These are for the, not for the district nurse, but for the nurses actually stationed at, um, the school. And this will be an addendum to the original contract that was approved in May, at, at the May school board meeting. I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education approve the Cumberland Family Medical, uh, center contracted in number one as presented. We appreciate, um, they've been doing that now for a number of years and we certainly appreciate that.
I make that motion.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper?
Yes.
Detective Department of Education COVID-19 vaccine incentive payment program.
Okay, you all have probably seen this on the news, I know I've shared information with this, but the Kentucky Department of Education is, is taking part of their elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds to provide reimbursements to districts that have rewarded, acknowledged the time, energy, and effort staff members took to get vaccinated. And that verbiage is a language that I copied and pasted from KDE. All full and part-time employees of public school districts are eligible for a one-time vaccination, um, incentive payment of a hundred dollars. That does include, uh, substitutes and many of our substitutes participated in that and they're considered part-time employees and we can get the reimbursement from that. And that also applies to school board members and, and, um, they were, they noted that in, um, in the presentation and then Eric Kennedy followed up with an email regarding that as well. This reimbursement is for employees who have previously been vaccinated, so it goes back if you've been vaccinated period, as well as those who have received their full vaccinations by December the first, twenty-twenty-one. Um, and then that note that KDE's estimating eighty-eight thousand, uh, local school district staff. We have to pay the employees first and then submit a reimbursement, um, to the Kentucky Department of Education to get that back. The boards can choose to do more, KDE is reimbursing one hundred dollars. So we, if we say we're gonna give a hundred dollars to employees, we will get that hundred dollars back. If the board says, well, we wanna give two hundred dollars, then we would just get that hundred dollar back of it. I'm, I'm just recommending that we continue with what KDE is gonna reimburse us. And then I've, I've included the information from the Commissioner of Glasses webcast, the newsletter, the email from Eric Kennedy for your also, for your own review. There will be some people, some of us has already reached out to us that, due to timing and, and, you know, if they've had the infusion, they have to wait ninety days, that some folks, they wanna participate, they wanna be eligible for this. They will not be, they will not meet that December timeline to be fully eligible. That does not mean that at a future board meeting, the district can't decide on its own to, to incentivize or, or to compensate those individuals that missed the timeline. But that would be, have to be something we could address at a, at a later date. But for right now, it's everybody through December the first of twenty-twenty-one. And I know Ms. Carnes is gonna have another webinar about this and a variety of things, they referenced it for finance officers. But in essence, everybody's been fully vaccinated, gives us proof, we will pay them a hundred dollars through payroll. Taxes have to be taken out of it, although they've said retirement does not come out of it. But we do have to take out taxes and then we'll submit reimbursement to the Kentucky Department of Education.
And Kentucky Department of Education is only reimbursing the hundred dollars.
Yeah, not fringes.
Not reimbursing all the match benefits that have to go into life, social security, Medicare. That is already gonna have some, some of those, our reserve fund. I'm expecting more information from them on co-coming of it, how they would all structure and how to submit the reimbursement and all of that stuff. Because there will have to be some proofs required for this, but there's, have to be very careful about how we ask for that proof and who can see the proof and all that due to the HIPAA regulations. But we wanna make sure that we're very clear when we ask for that, that employees are acknowledging that it's voluntary, that we've not made them give us this, that if they want, they don't, I mean, you could be vaccinated inside and return that over to you and I, I just, I don't want the hundred dollars to get it. So there's a lot of legal, I guess you could say, issues that we're gonna have to be very careful with the collection of that information as a payment of that, that fund.
Because we are gonna have to have proof of the vaccination, how we collect that.
I, I would anticipate that we will pay this as a special payroll time, we did that other supplemental pay after we've got, the timeline is passed and we've had the time for that, for everyone to collect that up and do it all at one time because of all that exclusion of the retirement and the, there's, there's a lot to make that happen. It has to go on behind the scenes to, to get that all to work, so.
I thought we'd not get tomorrow.
We'll have to, we'll know more about that after paying somebody all the money.
I thought we'd get tomorrow.
Is that this week, Ms. Carnes? I was thinking.
It's either this Thursday or next Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
They do them on Thursdays a lot, so I'm thinking it's this Thursday.
And I know vaccines are a little bit controversial, uh, I get that, but I also don't want to deny our employees a hundred dollars when we're being reimbursed for it minus the fringes that we can pay for our ESER funds, so. Your card carrying member?
I carry mine everywhere.
So I recommend that Russell County Schools participate in the Kentucky Department of Education's Vaccine Incentive Program with a hundred dollar payment to full and part-time employees and school board members because they, they said you all were eligible to participate in that.
Eric Kennedy made that claim.
Yep.
Is that a conflict of interest for us to do that? Is this not a conflict of interest to, to approve that?
Well, I know, and Ms. Delk and I had that same conversation, Ms. Joy.
Yeah.
But it is what it is, I mean, they're very clear that you all could be included and you're not employees, so it needed to be included in the motion of it, but you're allowed to do that. It's just like, um, um, the, the stipend rate, you know, that's something you all approve as a board and this is a participate in the program, so, I mean, it's legal.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that, I appreciate that.
Oh, I make a motion that we participate in the Kentucky Department of Education Vaccine Incentive Program, which is a hundred dollar payment to full and part-time employees and school board members.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper? So we know things may change, but right now, um, the Y Club, of course, they've done that for a number of years, minus last year, but they were always a very successful group, um, and it's scheduled for November twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty-third at the Kentucky, for the Kentucky Youth Assembly in Louisville, Kentucky. And then the seniors, the seniors trip is scheduled for May eighth through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, New York City. Of course, they didn't get to do that last year's, uh, either, or the previous year, so. We hope that all works out for them to go on this year. So at this time, I do recommend approval of the out-of-state and or overnight trips.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state and overnight trips.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
Ms. Whipper?
Yes.
I know, I do too.
Fundraisers?
Uh, the following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the listed fundraisers. Jameson Elementary School for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, the Kona High, Kona Quest, they sell the Kona highs and Jameson Elementary School, uh, be selling the Little Seizures, uh, frozen pizza kits, pizza bread and cookies. They were at Jameson Friday and told us if anybody at the board wanted one, they could come over and walk and get one. And most of us took advantage of that.
I didn't know it, I didn't, I didn't got any one.
Yeah, it's good.
They're wet, wonderful.
They're really good to work with, too. I recommend approval of the school-wide fundraisers.
I'll make a motion to approve the school-wide fundraisers.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whipper?
Yes.
Personnel reports?
Sandy Radford, James, the higher Jameson Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Leah Turner, Salem Elementary School Intervention and Remediation Teacher. Heather Stargell, Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Linda Petrus, Russell Springs Elementary School MSD Instructional Assistant. Samantha Neely, Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Keela Sullivan, Russell County Middle School Social Studies Teacher. Sharon Gilbert, Russell County Middle School Cook-Casier. Skylar Stapleton, Russell County Middle School Assistant Football Coach. Stephen Betts, Russell County Middle School Boys, um, Head Soccer Coach. Also wanna thank Mr. Betts, um, of course, we've had an NGLTC position posted for a long, long time and it has to come through the Navy and has to take the applications and, um, but never been able to hire someone yet for that position. Mr. Betts, of course, is retired military, uh, Army, uh, but he's been subbing with, uh, Mr. Shelton in NGLTC and really every day and, uh, really enjoying that and we appreciate him stepping up and helping us there. Cheryl Newby, Russell County High School JV Head Soccer Coach. Dwayne Richards, Russell County High School Alternative to Suspension Placement Teacher. Jacob Connor, Russell County High School English Teacher. Christina Bunch, Russell County High School Intervention and Remediation Teacher. Sean Coffey, Russell County High School Assistant Boys Golf Coach. Sean Coffey, Russell County High School Resigned Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Dustin Guster, Russell County High School Resigned Custodian. Richard Keen, Russell County High School Resigned Assistant Bowling Coach. Felicia Coffey, District-wide Home Hospital Instructor. Meredith Hopper, District-wide Food Service Substitute. Haley Burton, District-wide Classified, Classified Substitute Position. Brittany Blakey, District-wide Substitute Teacher. Melinda Wilson, District-wide Classified, Classified Substitute Position. Amy McQuary, District-wide Substitute Teacher. Chloe Burton, District- Chloe Burton, District-wide Substitute Teacher. Caitlin Burton, District-wide Substitute Teacher. Very, very thankful and appreciative of the people that, of course, we always appreciate our employees, but the additional folks that have came on board as substitutes. That's always been a concern of you all and it helps us stay in school. And I just want to give a, appreciate everybody during this difficult time, but the principals and the assistant principals have just, you can imagine the, what they've had to orchestrate to cover classes and everything. So it takes everybody working together and we appreciate, appreciate that.
I messed up. I'm a high school one, it's Dustin Gosser, not Gosser.
I didn't.
Well, I wondered about that.
Yes.
I know that was who that was. I thought it might have been another person.
Yes, Dustin Gosser, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Delk.
I just thought it was another, somebody else had that same name.
Yeah, Dustin Gosser.
I didn't know he was a custodian and a teacher.
He's a teacher today and he's been.
Custodian at night, I don't know. At least somebody else got that same name.
Thank you, Ms. Delk. And there's more. Ms. Janet and Ms. Rita have really been working with. We have some more that will be coming on board as well as far as substitutes, don't miss Rita, in the pipeline. And some of these folks can't sub every day and that's okay.
That's okay.
You can sub one day a week, we can, we can use you.
Okay, next public comment. Anyone have anything to say?
Ms. Whipper, I will note that compared to, for our COVID numbers in the school as of this afternoon compared to Friday, we ended on Friday with 206 students in quarantine exposure. We ended today with 198. So I'm always anxious to see how things come over the weekend of students that, you know, are tested and exposed and things like that. So always live with that number on Monday and that number is down. And we went from 73 students on Friday that were positive to 53 students today. This was as 2:37 this afternoon. So all of that together, that is 251 students that are either quarantined or in isolation. And we ended on Friday with 279. And we have seven employees that are either quarantined or in isolation due to being positive. And Friday, we had eight. So just thankful that the numbers are a little bit lower now than what they were on Friday.
I know.
Nobody's got no question?
Ms. Brenner?
Nobody's got a question?
Oh, she was making a comment. She was, she's ready for your.
I make a motion to adjourn. Somebody might have a question.
All the thing?